Good evening. The November 9th, 2022 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
I'm here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Long Branch mayor, city council, and administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Alfonso Machado to please come forward.
I have a little presentation to display.
Thank you.
Recognizing National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Long Branch. Whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush declared November to be National American Indian Heritage Month, with subsequent declarations more appropriately entitled Native American Heritage Month, which refers to Indigenous Americans, including both Native Americans and Alaska Native Americans. And whereas there are 574 federally recognized American Indian and Alaska Native tribes and villages, and four recognized tribes and one reservation within the state of New Jersey. And whereas in the month shared with Veterans Day, we honor Native Americans who have courageously served in our armed forces, acknowledging their vital role in World War I and World War II, and noting that they continue to serve at a higher rate than any other ethnic group in our country. And whereas it is important that we honor the resilience, love, and strength of these Americans who brought us to this point in our history, and to their leaders who faithfully strive to preserve their cherished traditions. And whereas in 2021, there has been increased recognition and inclusivity of Native peoples in positions of influence on the federal level, with a record number of six Native Americans being elected to Congress. And whereas it is important for us to join the nation in celebrating the contributions that this important segment of our city has made to the development of our country, our shared need to confront prejudice in our communities, and work toward a vision of understanding and inclusiveness for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Long Branch hereby declares November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alfonso Machado. Good job.
Alfonso, you did a great job. Thank you. Congratulations on being named Student of the Month. It's a great achievement. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no ordinances for public consideration at this time. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 25-22, entitled An Ordnance Amending Sections 116-2C of the Code of the City of Long Branch Beach Fees. An ordinance amending the fees for the use of the City of Long Branch beaches, establishing the holiday beach pass rate at $45 per person's age 18 to 61, and $25 per person's 14 to 17 years of age. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Tracy Brown, 209 Liberty Street. Over near the pool.
Lift up a mic.
I'm sorry. Over near the pool, you have the basketball courts. The basketball hoop that is closest to the pool entrance, is there any way to get a net up along the fence behind the court to the side? Because when the kids miss the net or the getting, making a basket, it goes over into the pool area, so they have to jump the fence to get the ball back. So is there any way to...
I'll mention, I'll mention it to Stan, Tracy. Let's see what we can do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because I just didn't want the kids to keep jumping the fence and then something happens. Either they get caught on it or...
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent Lapore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Mr. Martin's not here this evening. Assistant Administrator De Angelis, do you know for the record the current debt of the city of Long Branch? You don't? Okay. We're banging better than $95 million. The reason I'm asking is because, and I want the people to keep this in mind, the city's redevelopment in 2005, when it commenced, promised the paydown of a $23 million debt. You see where we are today, banging around $95 million. It was a lie, and just goes to prove to the taxpayers of the city the failure of this What was aggravating was today, with all the online development coming on in this city, the Long Branch Sewage Authority raised the rates of the ratepayers of Long Branch unjustifiably. And I'm going to name the commissioners that raised the rates. Don Riley, Michael Booth, Brian Larkle, David Brown, and Susie Morris. People may ask, but why are you bringing this up here? Because they were all appointed by the mayor, or reappointed by a mayor's position. We had today, that's a rate increase on residential, from 336 to 368, up $32. Commercial, $4.80 to 526. Mind you, this will bring in a revenue to the Sewage Authority of $700,000. Verse, a Long Branch Sewage Authority reserve of $4 million. Again, it's unconscionable. This redevelopment has brought online many units as revenue to the Sewage Authority. So why are we raising rates? Any increased costs that the Sewage Authority could easily be offset by the revenue coming in, and notwithstanding a $4 million reserve that was set for a rainy day. It's cruel, and it's wrong. Putting that in perspective, over the last few weeks, if people aren't going to get clobbering enough in this city with a Sewage Authority increase, we saw throughout social media, the brazen rent increases taking place throughout the city. Beyond increased costs, greed. That's Long Branch. From the conception of its redevelopment in 2005 to what we're experiencing now, greed. Beyond the justifiable costs of the landlords. Why do we say this now? Because we have a destabilized tax base. The Palone team's been in power for better than five years. What have they done for rent stabilization? Nothing. Why have they done nothing? Because they can't even stabilize the tax base in this city. It's destabilized. And John Palone's 30-year tax abatement for Pier Village Phase III hasn't helped at all, when millionaires continue to flip condos at Pier Village Phase III, making million-dollar profits, while the regular taxpayer in this city is getting their teeth kicked out. To those out there complaining about the rent increases, when you go on social media, name the landlords, whether individuals or corporate. We want to know. We want to know who the greed machines are in this city. And the failure of the Palone team to address stabilizing rents because of their inability to stabilize the tax base in this city. Junk government.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
I always love to follow Diddy. All right. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. My primary reason that I'm here tonight is to talk about rent stabilization and some other things. But first, I did make some notes, because I'm Rice. I live in Long Branch. I never give my address, and I think that is a policy that should be abolished at City Council, because people are wacko these days, and I don't think that we should have to disclose our addresses. So first a few statements, then my questions for council before I run out of time. I'd like to thank everyone that put their time and effort into running for Long Branch School Board. Local elections and hyper-community-based work is so important, we need each other. Congratulations to Mrs. Dangler, Mr. Garlip, and Mr. Grant. I'd also like to thank the Community Garden, as well the residents and local businesses that continue to give to Jersey Shore Food Not Bombs, so we can distribute fresh vegetables, a hot vegan meal, and clothing. Our food shares every Wednesday at the Long Branch Trade Station at 6:00 p.m. Rain, snow, or shine, we will be there. Everyone is welcome regardless of income, and there are no questions asked or paperwork to complete. We rescue food and share it with our community. We will be having a meeting at the Long Branch Public Library on this Saturday at 1:30. Everyone is welcome if they are interested in contributing, or knowing how we can kind of develop a coalition to combat food insecurity. I'm really blown away by the kindness of folks in town who give us containers, clothing, reusable bags, as well as the businesses that donate produce. I've been a volunteer with Food Not Bombs in many places across the country over the last 30 years, and having a share in Long Branch, for me, is special. Growing up with a lot of food insecurity and the old Long Branch Woodrow Wilson, community caring and sharing is special. So now on to why I came here. I did come here because I did see a post on social media where someone was talking about their rent increases. But before I get into that, I have a question for our new Public Safety Director in light of the elections. Sheriff Golden was re-elected yesterday, and I personally feel that Sheriff Golden is extremely problematic, and in contrast to the community policing and community development that we want here in Long Branch. I, I'm very offended for our community with his efforts to militarize police, and how we have seen Hummers, you know, guards with like long guns at Pier Village. And so my question after, for you after my time, is how do you plan on working with Sheriff Golden and incorporate that with our efforts to increase community policing, and not have a repeat of things like Jump Out Boys and the police brutality that we have seen over many decades in Long Branch? Now I will talk about rent stability. I've been seeing posts where renters are experiencing 10% to 20% rent increases, and I have not personally experienced that for myself. I feel very grateful that I have a rental. I've had less than 5% increases...
One-minute warning.
...over several years. These are my questions. Does Long Branch currently have any ordinances regarding rental increases? Is there a cap? We have lost a lot of year-round rentals to seasonal leases for summer and Monmouth University folks. What can we do to limit this and assure that there are adequate year-round rentals for our residents, and that we don't continue to lose more units? Airbnbs are not allowed, according to the city. What is being done to monitor these rentals? Mr. Ray Noni, I know that you have been instrumental in getting rent stabilization set up in other municipalities. What will you do for the city of Long Branch? How can you help us? I see people in town talking about these increases. As renters, we are given 60 days' notice of rental increases. When you have a rent increase of $500 to $1,000, 60 days' notice?
Five minutes.
Incredible. I've been fortunate where I have not had this happen to me. What can we do to work with landlords to minimize the increases and ensure housing stability? I think that we should be working with landlords also, and give them incentives, and figure out this plan. We used to have a tenant landlord board. It's in our code.
I'm sorry, you have five minutes.
I know. Okay, thank you.
We'll take your time.
A landlord-tenant, a landlord-tenant board is in our code. What happened to that board? It's non-existent.
So, Leitriz, why don't you, why don't you make an appointment with the clerk, and we'll have, we'll have a, you know, council office hours. I'll attend. Lindsey will attend.
I, I think we need a town meeting on this. Is that...
Well, I mean, let's get started. You're probably, maybe, but let's, you know, let's get started and hear it out, because you asked a lot of questions.
I appreciate that, John, but honestly, I think that we're at the point where we need a town meeting on rent stability and what should happen. There is supposed to be a tenant landlord board in our, it's in our code, and it just disappeared under Schneider. And I'm not here to blame council and what the, like, you've all done great work, okay? Like, but we had the same mayor for 28 years, and that board disappeared. The function of that board was to be a buffer between eviction court with issues where landlords weren't fixing things, and the board completely disappeared. And like, first and foremost, as a council, instead of like telling me to like have office hours with you, I think the best thing would be to find out like what you, as a council, as our city, plan to do with that board that has now gone defunct. We have open positions on all these boards, the Cable Commission, zoning, all these things. No one has done anything with the tenant landlord board. There is a time where tenants and landlords could come and be in front of this board and resolve issues.
So, Leitriz, again, you know, you want to forget about office hours, that's fine. I'd be happy to meet with you, with our business administrator. I think we need to know the issue. You had mentioned to me at one point that there was a tenant landlord board. As long as I've been on the council since 2010, I don't know that it existed. So I'd be happy to get together with you and whoever, and let's meet first to see what the issues are that we can do, before we have just a town meeting.
I would, I would be willing to do that if we could bring in some other local community organizations, like David Perez, maybe from the library, and also Motions, who deals with independent living for disabled people, maybe...
Bring in, Leitriz, bring in anybody you want. Can you, I'll be happy to. Do me a favor, call me tomorrow, and we'll set something up.
And can Mr. Ray Noni, can you address my questions about your previous experience with rate, rent stabilization in other communities that you've worked in?
I'm not sure that I can. I don't understand what you mean by my experience. So I represent some towns that have rent control boards and some towns that don't. There's state statutes with regards to them that essentially exempt out new buildings. So, I mean, they're, they're, you know, in Jersey City and Hoboken and those types of places, they have different...
Edison, Woodbridge.
Well, Woodbridge has an ordinance, and it's a, you know, fairly typical ordinance. I mean, if you know that I represent Woodbridge, you know that there's been a recent controversy concerning one of the, one of the developments that's not new anymore.
We have people facing 20% rent increases with sixty...
I understand. I just didn't know what you, I'm, I mean, what, I wasn't quite sure what you wanted me to say. I mean, I represent towns that have rent control boards. I represent towns that have landlord-tenant advisory boards. That's, by the way, what we have here, right? It's a non-binding board.
Like, are there ways that you think that maybe you can help us?
Oh, I always think that, but it's, you know, what the, when the mayor decides, I think that's the point that the mayor was trying to make, which is that if you want to sit down and start talking about what the alternatives are, we can sit down and talk about the alternatives.
Can Mr. Ray Noni be part of this meeting?
Sure. The mayor wants to be there.
I'm sorry, what?
She would like me to be at the meeting.
Of course.
Sure.
Of course.
Okay.
Leitriz, call me tomorrow. We'll set up a meeting as soon as we get together.
And I know we, I have access with the council, I understand that, but I didn't want to come here and talk about it, because people are getting evicted, people are losing their homes. And then alternatively, there are landlords that are losing their shirt. I'm not a fan of landlords, but I have to say, mine has been very fair.
Yeah.
So, who do I contact for that, on the record?
For, for...
The meeting.
Leitriz, if you want to put it on record, I, I'll have a meeting, we'll work it out tomorrow. I mean, you know me so well, we talk all the time.
I know that, but I'm asking, who do I contact for that meeting?
Oh, Susan, call me.
Okay, thank you.
Lindsey, or call me. We'll, you know, we'll get together.
Susan picks up her phones, but either me or Susan.
And, and I'm only being a little more aggressive here, because we've been talking about this for a couple of years. I've been bringing it up, and we really need to get something on the books and have community involvement with this, and figure it out. So, thank you, everybody, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. William Brownman, 990 Vanquart Avenue in Long Branch. So I just want to thank the Public Safety Director, Mr. Martin, local, county, and state law enforcement officials. For five days ago, there was a bomb scare at the, for the local synagogues in New Jersey. There was one today in Edison. I thought everyone did a great job with that. Unfortunately, with all the rhetoric and, and all, everything that's been going on, anti-Semitism has gone up exponentially. I find it just extremely disheartening, disturbing. I am, my father was a Holocaust survivor, and for me, you know, when I listen to people in town and I hear all the rhetoric and, you know, and see what's going on, it really is, it's bothersome, and it's worrisome. You know, I mean, for me, you know, people look at me and they wouldn't know if I was Jewish from, from a hole in the wall. But there were people in our town who, who are religious, and I worry. You know, I worry that with all the rhetoric, that something, and it could just, a matter of not if, but when. But moving to what I said initially, I just want to thank law enforcement, local, county, state for being vigilant, just to make sure that, that the area was, was kept safe. And as far as everything else, again, compliment you, doing a great job, and that's pretty much it. And back to what Rice was saying about rent control, I mean, one of the main things that could happen is when all the redevelopment, when you build new, whatever, new multi-unit dwellings or whatever, there should be, of course, there's supposed to be a percentage that's deemed for affordable housing. And just want to make sure that that's, I think so, right? When any new building goes up, is there a percentage that, that goes for affordable housing? Do we have that?
Yeah, I don't know the, do you know what was, what's the percentage, or what's the size?
They put them in other places.
They, they do that here?
Well, no. Actually, the, the most recent development that was redevelopment agreement that was approved here is the Kushner redevelopment of Lower Broadway, which has 30 affordable units that are built on-site.
Right. And that really, that's, that's really...
They built that, they're built part of that. And by the way, that was one of the advantages of that redevelopment, because the prior plan that the prior administration had put in place would have allowed them to build 32 out of 600 units, and they were going to be built somewhere else in the city. These to be built on-site.
Right. And that's one thing, and that, it's a good way to, because there's going to be a lot of, there's still going to be a lot of building, a lot of these, you know, I understand what Rice is saying as far as, as affordable housing, but, you know, given the, the increase in everything, you know, I know there have been some landlords who have been really, I mean, and she's right when she says, you know, they, 20%, 25%, but there are things that, that, I mean, that can be done, again, with affordable housing, and that's something that we should really put into, in writing into any new redevelopment, that, that's all part of it. Listen, I have a home up in, in Cape Cod in Provincetown, Massachusetts, and, and a lot of seashore areas are having this issue where, you know, there's a Cumberland Farms there that closes at 2 o'clock, and why? Because they don't have the people to work there, and why don't they have the people? Because they can't afford to live in town. Now, it's a smaller community, but that is on the rise. So, you know, as you see Long Branch developing, we really do have to keep an eye on it, and that could be addressed by either building more affordable housing. I mean, even myself, for, for, you know, senior housing, the waiting lists are closed. You can't even, you know, they've been closed for now over a year. You know, there really is, it's just a matter of just starting from point A and just moving forward, you know? And that's it. But thank you, everyone, for the great job. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
He's going to be part of that meeting with us.
Okay. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will now ask Madam Clerk if there are any changes to the list of resolutions.
No changes have been made.
Thank you. We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. May I?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Applications, I need a motion to appoint the following member of the Long Branch Fire Department, Aaron A. Campbell, West End, active status.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
And at this time miscellaneous business for the good of the order, Councilman Dangler.
Yes, good evening. First, before I forget, I do believe Friday is Veterans Day. So I would like to thank all of those who have served in the armed services, whatever branch you may have been. The service is not for me, but I do appreciate the dedication and the sacrifice that you have made to keep this country what it is today. Also, as the holiday seasons are on the way, please keep in mind that COVID is still alive and well and that we do need to just protect ourselves. We are relaxed a little bit in regards to just trying to get back to our normal way of life. But we still need to respect the fact that even with the vaccine, you could still get sick. So mask up when you can. Thank you and have safe, before we see you again in the next two weeks. God bless you all.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
Yes, good evening and thanks for coming, being a part of our meeting. I wanna thank Alfonso Machado for did a great job with Heritage Month. And I also wanna echo what the Councilman Dangler said about the veterans. We have a few memorials set up for Friday. So if you could be part of that, it would be nice. I think we have one at Jerry Morgan at 10:00 a.m. and one here in the City Hall at 11:00. And Tracy, thanks for keeping up the date up with us. We'll do something with our basketball net. And thanks for being a part of our meeting tonight. Good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. So just a few things, first of all, to congratulate all of the winners from the election. For everybody who stepped forward, whether they won or whether they didn't, every conversation moves us forward. So congratulations to all of them. I also wanna congratulate Alfonso for just a really magnificent reading of that proclamation. And I also wanna thank Marcus Rodriguez and our city clerk Heather because the two of them now have kind of, they run this part of the meeting. And it was the, Mr. Rodriguez who said, "We can put this little video together." And it just adds so much to our appreciation for all the ethnic groups that are being recognized. So thanks to the two of you and to Alfonso. It's just fun to see how that idea that we started off with has really blossomed into a performance like tonight. So many thanks on that. And last, this is just a, some information for our seniors. If anyone is interested in this, I work on several councils, councils with the county. And the, the senior citizen group is starting a senior advisory council. And they are looking for volunteers, for people who would like to serve on this to obviously represent the ideas for seniors and how we improve services and what we could do on a county level. For things like this, you probably know me well enough now to know I'd love to see Long Branch represented on these county committees. So if anybody is interested in serving on this committee, it's just being put together now. If you could contact Heather RC, clerk, tomorrow, just let her know. And it's a very simple form that you just need to fill out and send it in. And they'll be contacting you, contacting you to join that group. Great way to have Long Branch represented and to continue all of our services for our seniors. And with that, thank you for coming. Have a safe next two weeks and we'll see you in just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selly?
Mr. Dangler mentioned Veterans Day, which is Friday. The city offices are closed. However, there will be a ceremony right over here in the park at 11:00. And I would like to congratulate all the winners and those people that did not win. I'm not gonna call them losers because I don't think they're losers. They all stepped up to the plate to wanna serve. And I, for that, I say thank you. And in particular, I would like to congratulate our congressman for one once more. And thank, thank Frank for his service to the city of Long Branch. And with that, I will say good night.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
Thank you, Council President. So I'm just gonna repeat, the veterans event is again at 10:00 at Jerry Morgan Park and followed by the ceremony at City Hall at 11:00. All are invited to join us. Seasonal beach badges are on sale right now until February 1st for a fee of $45. They'll be going up to $70 starting February 1st. So go to longbranch.org to find out how to purchase one of those couple locations where you can do that. But again, try to do that before February 1st if you can. The Recreation Department is currently collecting toys for its annual toy drive. This is for age newborn to 10-year-olds. Call Recreation to find out where and how you can drop off some donated gifts. You can also call them at 732-571-6545. And then I also just wanted to end that we have a whole schedule of holiday events this year coming out very soon. Check out our social media and website for the exact date. This is everything from tree lighting to menorah lighting to Santa visiting with the kids and just a whole bunch of things. Thank you all for being here this evening and have a great week.
I also would like to thank everyone for being here this evening and for your comments and concerns. And we appreciate you expressing those. Wanna also thank the Long Branch Board of Education for partnering with us on these Heritage Month. And, you know, it's great to be working with them. And I also look forward to, we're gonna have a mock council with the students from Long Branch on November 30th. And all are welcome to attend that. So it's a great partnership and I wanna thank them all. And with that, I would like to wish everyone a healthy next two weeks and hope to see you back here again. Thank you. I need a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Good luck, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.